Good evening, everybody. I am calling the Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting to order at six thirty P M. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, or the public may also watch this meeting online at Burnsville M N dot gov slash meetings, or view us on Comcast Channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. The public can also join us on Zoom by going to zoom dot U S slash join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the agenda. First order of business is adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. And we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting. We had an opportunity to approve or review the minutes, and if so, can I get a motion?
Do approve. I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, and the motion is carried. We're rolling right on through. We have a workshop being presented by City Attorney Jared Shepherd.
All right, good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. Thanks for having me here this evening. We're doing a land use planning and zoning training. We haven't done one of these since I've been a city attorney, so I'm happy that we have the opportunity to to go through some of this material, and as I go along, you know, feel free to ask questions as I go along. You can also save your questions to the end. My mind is in covering whatever your question is. But we're gonna try to cover a lot of material in a kind of a truncated fashion, so we'll get into it. So when we talk about zoning, we first start with the municipal authority to plan. So there's two main bodies of law where we get our authority for for the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council to engage in in land use planning. That's the Municipal Land Use Planning Act and the Metropolitan Land Use Planning Act. The Municipal Land Use Planning Act is Minnesota Statutes Chapter four sixty-two, and the Metropolitan Land Use Planning Act is Minnesota Statutes four seventy-three. The Minnesota Land Use Planning Act provides the authority and and uniform procedures for conducting and implementing municipal planning for all cities. The Act has been around for a long time, since nineteen sixty-five, and comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances must comply with substantive and procedural requirements under the Act. The legislature said within the in the Act that it's the purpose is to provide to municipalities and a single body of law with the necessary powers and uniform procedure for adequately conducting, implementing municipal planning. The gloss on that is for counties in the seven county metro area, there's also the Metropolitan Land Use Planning Act. This requires the adoption of a comprehensive plan before a zoning ordinance may be adopted or amended. These requirements do not apply outside of the seven county metro area. And the purposes of the Metropolitan Land Use Planning Act is to make sure that local planning controls are consistent on a kind of a regional basis. So we're gonna kind of jump to metropolitan land use planning and then jump back to to more traditional zoning principles. So the policy, as I said, of the Land Use Planning Act is to coordinate land use plans, controls, and programs to ensure orderly development in the metropolitan area. Comprehensive municipal plans are required. Each local government and and, you know, some of these concepts, I'm sure the Planning Commission, of course, is familiar with, is required to adopt a comprehensive plan or a comp plan that must be approved by the Metropolitan Council. Comp plans must comply with various metropolitan system requirements covering issues such as transportation, parks, sanitary sewer systems, and airports. One of the main things is that there is a prohibition against the adoption of inconsistent official controls. So state law requires that when the plan is amended, zoning ordinance and other official controls must be amended within nine months, so as not to conflict. So your comprehensive plan and your land use designations kind of drive the bus, if you will. So what is the role of the Planning Commission? Well, this kind of brings us back to Chapter four sixty-two. And and under City Code two, City Code two-one-one, the Planning Commission is an advisory body to the City Council charged with the responsibility of researching, reviewing, and making recommendations on issues related to land use and development in the city. So that City Code provision stems from Chapter four sixty-two state law, and there's several duties imposed by state law on the Planning Commission. The preparation and review of comprehensive plans, the coordination and review with other local units of government, periodic review of the comp plan, adoption of the comp plan, recommendations of the Planning Commission to put the comp plan into effect. Those include zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, official maps, and then review of land use acquisitions and capital improvements. So once a comp plan is adopted, all proposed land acquisitions of the city must go to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation to the council. The Planning Commission will then submit a written report describing the findings. However, the council may dispense with that requirement by a two-thirds vote if it feels no comprehensive plan issues are involved. One of your 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 main responsibilities is review of land use control measures. Requires the Planning Commission to review zoning ordinance amendments, subdivision plans, and official maps. As you know, you engage in public hearings, take public comment, and, you know, receive and pass upon applications from from members of the public related to land use. In Burnsville, as you all know, that if you have a unanimous decision of the Planning Commission and staff supported the recommendation, then that decision just goes directly on the consent agenda for sort of unanimous adoption by the City Council without further review. It's only, for the most part, only those issues in which there's a divided Planning Commission or maybe a lack of support from from staff where that issue will come for, you know, full sum review in front of the City Council. So zoning is an important tool to implement the comprehensive plan. Zoning establishes a land use pattern and orderly development of various types of district according to the best particular areas, best use of particular areas of the community. So what we're talking about is dividing districts, the the community into districts, a commercial district or a business district, residential district, industrial district. Zoning is the most commonly used technique in implementing the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. It is essentially the legal means to ensure that the goals of the comprehensive plan are carried out. The authority for for zoning in our City Code is Section ten dash two dash one, and then from state statute, it's four sixty-two, three fifty-seven. It's kind of the baseline statute with respect to zoning. The basic land use controls of the city are found in the zoning ordinance, which regulates the location, height, bulk, number of stories, size of building and other structures, percentage of the plot which may be occupied, the size of yards and open spaces, density and distribution of population, the use of buildings and structures for trade, industry, residence, recreation, public activity, other purposes, the use of land for trade, industry, residence, recreation. There's kind of an ad nauseam list there. But but you get the picture. That is zoning in a nutshell. Zoning ordinance are construed by courts according to their plain meaning and in favor of the property owner. So when you get a chance to review a code or tweak a code or looking at an amendment, we want to make sure that we're doing so with regard to to clarity and concreteness. So if there is a concern about how a zoning ordinance is gonna be read, it's gonna be read against the city and in favor of of the private landowner. And that goes all the way back to a famous case for us, Lane.
Go ahead. How does multi-use zoning cause issue?
Like mixed-use zoning?
Yeah, if you got a mixed zoning in a particular parcel, such as retail and residential.
What what do you, is there something specific?
What complications are brought about by having multi-use zoning?
Well, I it's a broad question, but I would say it's making sure that that the individual mixed uses are are compatible and working together, right? So if you have, let's say, a restaurant, and the the pattern of use is gonna bring a certain amount of people to that particular block and that particular parking area from four to ten P M, then do the other uses in that particular zone align with that so that you you're gonna have the right parking needs? I mean, that's just one example, but when you're looking at, you know, and that would come into play when you're looking at a pre-regular parcel, but also would come into play when you're looking at, say, a planned unit development, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Let's see here. All right. Gotta head myself. Zoning maps. So zoning ordinances may divide the city into districts as zones, we talked about, and will you adopt, the city has adopted a zoning map that that identifies the boundaries of the various zoning districts. So any individual resident or interested business owner is able to get on the city's website and look at the zoning map and determine whether or not particular parcel in question is within what district. Of course, they can also talk to city staff when they have an inquiry as well, but that gives some baseline information to any of our residents. One of the the primary or or baseline principles of zoning is uniformity required within the zoning districts. So you're treating each class or kind of building, structure, land, or use similar. We're gonna talk about a little bit about the procedures for adopting and amending zoning ordinances. And I want to make sure I don't lose my spot here, but the Planning Commission may submit proposed ordinances to the council at any time. So the Planning Commission can make recommendations to the council about particular changes to the zoning code. In addition, as as you all know, applicants, developers, residents come forward to the to the Planning Commission, ultimately the council, quite frequently with an application to make a a zoning amendment in addition to other types of applications like variances and conditional use permits that we'll talk about. Whenever the commission is looking at a zoning ordinance amendment, you're gonna study it. You're gonna make sure you have a discussion, look at whether or not it works in conjunction with the other, the district itself or the other related districts. You're gonna have a public hearing on that, so you're gonna have a notice and public hearing requirements for all of those amendments. After that public hearing, you're gonna discuss potentially revisions to the the amendment as proposed, and then ultimately submission to the council. When the council approves that, then it is published and adopted as a as a new zoning ordinance. As part of that process and as part of your general review of applications that come in front of you, sometimes there is the necessity for interim ordinance or a moratorium. Is anyone familiar with that term? So what that means is is that the state law allows us to take time when kind of a novel issue comes in in front of the city that maybe we haven't really solved for within our our zoning code, and we can adopt a moratorium or interim ordinance on 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 new applications. And that can be even spawned by an application that is in front of you. So if you wanna, for example, study assembly uses, because you got an application that for an assembly use and you feel like these should be conditional uses, and some of the assemblies uses are permitted, you can adopt a moratorium that allows the Planning Commission the opportunity to study that issue before making any changes to the zoning code. So that's just another kind of gloss on that general process for zoning ordinances. So when we talk about, we talked a little bit about districts, so we might have commercial districts, residential districts. Within those districts, we have uses. We have permitted accessory and conditional uses. So permitted uses are uses that property owners have a right to engage in automatically. There's no discretion to deny a permitted use. So if if the Planning Commission and ultimately the council has made the legislative decision to allow something as a permitted use within a zoning district, that individual who owns the property can go ahead and engage in that use within that zoning district. It is generally arbitrary or unlawful to deny a building permit for a permitted use. So there's no review by the Planning Commission, so we don't see in this body, we don't see permitted uses, because they don't, there's nothing for us to review here. Applicant applies for a building permit with the supporting documentation that the that the use is permitted, and they go forth. Accessory uses are uses that cannot stand alone and must be accompanied by a principal use. A shed, for example, is a classic example of a accessory use in a residential area. And then conditional uses, conditional uses are being one of the types of uses that are the most litigated. Conditional uses are those that are permitted under certain conditions designated by the Planning Commission, ultimately the council, if those conditions are met. If a use isn't permitted in a zoning district, then it's not allowed. So there's no, hey, you didn't, you didn't list my my use, so it, you know, I automatically get it. You didn't specifically prohibit it. No, if it's not specifically allowed as a permitted use or allowed as a conditional use, it's not allowed. One of the other important principles to know is that there's no, we're gonna talk a little bit about variances later, but there's no use variances, so you can't apply to the Planning Commission and say, hey, I wanna operate an automobile automobile repair shop in this district where it's not allowed, and I want a variance to do so. You can't do that. You can't vary vary the use. You can only vary dimensional aspects of a particular use. If the use is neither permitted nor a conditional use, an applicant can apply for a rezoning to a zone in which the use is permitted or conditional. So, hey, I wanna rezone my particular parcel to a different district, or request that the city amend the zoning ordinance to allow the use as a permitted or conditional use in the district where the property is located. So I have a commercial district. Again, that auto repair shop's not listed as a permitted or conditional use. I think it should be based on all of the other, you know, permitted or conditional uses within the zoning district. It's compatible. I wanna make that application to have the city make that change. So one other category of use is interim uses. An interim use is a temporary use until a certain date or until the use is no longer permitted. So the intent is to allow it for a limited period of time that reasonably utilizes the property when the use is is contemplated under, it's not currently reasonable under the comp plan, but it may be unacceptable in light of future anticipated development. So the interim use must be provided for in the zoning code, so it's not like something that you can make an application for. We and then often interim uses, you see them for like mining activities, agricultural activities. But again, these are for limited periods of time. You can't make, in contrast to a conditional use permit, which a conditional use permit runs with the land. Historically, or 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 in the past, there were cities that made conditional use permits with a time element to them, the temporal elements, but that's not allowed with the conditional use permit anymore. So if if that's what you're thinking, the interim use may be the way to go. So, any questions so far? Discharging ahead.
We don't, we don't really see interim use here, from my recollection. It's pretty unusual for that to come through here.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't surprise me. I I feel like that.
Okay.
We do have, counts, um, sorry, commissioners, we do have an application right now for a interim use for a landscaping company to store vehicles and materials on a site that we're currently reviewing. That'll be moving forward to a, by a council meeting and planning commission meeting here within the next couple of months. But you are correct, there it is very rare. There's not a lot of, I think lots of these kind of moved away from them. There's this, like Jared said, there's a lot of potential litigation with them and the sunset dates, and they're very complex.
And I think you, to the extent you still see them, I think you tend to see them in cities that are that are kind of less developed, are developing on the edges. And so, you know, this end of town i- is not developed yet, but it will be. So we'll give you an interim use for something that's gonna happen over here as they develop portion spreads.
I have a question, please. If if a residential, suppose they've been having an auto repair out of their garage, and they've had it for ten, fifteen years, and no one has brought to the attention of the city or anything, and all of a sudden it's brought forward, can they claim, well, I've had it here for fifteen years now, why are you stopping me?
So if the zoning code prohibits it, and they started it before the zoning code prohibited, they may have an argument that it's a lawful, non-conforming use. If the zoning code prohibited it, and then they start it later in time, and no one apprised the city or no one complained about it, they still wouldn't have a lawful, non-conforming use. And that's assuming they were trying to make an argument that the use itself is allowed versus sort of a home occupation, which is kind of another another issue. So as we talked about before, conditional use is is a type of use where we made the determination that, hey, it can be allowed within this zoning district, but with some conditions to make sure that we can mitigate some of the aspects of this use that may cause problems for public health, safety, and welfare, or problems with with neighboring property owners. So we can put conditions on that use that are reasonably related to the use. So there must be a nexus requirement to any conditions that we want to oppose. So if you you put a condition that's just kind of wholly unrelated to the, what I call nuisance conditions, for lack of a better word, you're not gonna, that's not gonna pass muster. So it has to be related. And obviously, as we go through the planning process, you know, staff and 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 even the Planning Commission are engaging in a dialogue with applicants and engaging in a dialogue of what those conditions should be. And and the more and more you have that conversation, the better off you're gonna be, and you're gonna get conditions that make sense for the applicant and make sense for for enforcement of some of those issues. Again, as I talked about before, time limits. It used to be that there was sort of sunsets put into conditional use permits. You can't do that anymore. A conditional use permit runs with the land forever, so once you grant it, it gets recorded against the property. If that person sells the land and and goes and moves elsewhere, someone takes the land, they can do the same conditional use on that property without having to come back to the city and seek any other approvals. That parcel is allowed to have that conditional use, again, subject to the conditions within the permit itself. Again, as we've talked about before, the, a lot of times, things we do here at the Planning Commission requires a public hearing. A conditional use permits require a notice in a public hearing. So I think we're all familiar with with having those interactions with the public. If the the city's discretion is limited on an application for a conditional use permit, if that, if the applicant has met all the requirements in in the code related to the the conditional use permit. So ultimately, Planning Commission and the City Council ultimately have what's called quasi-judicial authority, and they're making a decision saying, hey, whether the the requirements of the zoning code lining up with the application, you're making sort of a quasi-judicial decision that this meets this, and therefore you grant or deny. But you can't just sort of make stuff up. The universe, your playbook is is narrow to what we have in the zoning code for that particular conditional use permit. One of the things when we talk about public hearings, obviously, we want we want public input, it's statutorily required. But neighborhood opposition or even a council member's sort of opinion or a commission member's opinion alone is an insufficient basis for denial. So if we have a a a use that's allowed, we've said, hey, this is a conditional use. Someone comes in and makes a conditional use permit application. If a resident come up, comes up, or even a a member of this body doesn't think that that particular use should exist in the district, the choice has already been made, the legislative decision's already been made, and we can't kind of go back on that legislative decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I have a question from a planning perspective. So within our City Code, if the conditional use permit does not, if the applicant does not move forward within a timeframe, generally, a lot of cities have that timeframe in there that says you have to either get a building permit or start operation within six months or one year. That's something you can put a timeframe on. Otherwise, you cannot put a sunset date on, said use cannot have a cease, correct?
Yes, you can do, thank you, Mike. You you can, you can do that timeframe with respect to getting some sort of prerequisite condition done to getting up and running. But it can't be, hey, you've met all of our prerequisite conditions, but five years, it's five years down the line, it's gonna evaporate. That, that's what you can't do.
Question, so ignore my ignorance, but CUP is like, eventually you could update code, zoning permit, things like that over time, right? Is that something you, like, if we keep seeing outdoor parking storage, right? Like, it's always common and it seems to be okay. Do we go back and review that as staff of recommendation for future zoning updates?
Yeah, that that is a good question, Commissioner. Maybe Jared can advise on this as well. So, for example, we have, the city has multiple conditional use permits, and some of them have been for uses that may be permitted now, or we're talking about maybe making permitted. For example, outdoor storage within an industrial district. Would they, would the conditional use permits then go void upon that change? Or would the applicant have to request an amendment? It's kind of a loaded question, I apologize, because there's multiple different avenues, as I'm saying it, that we could potentially do.
I mean, speaking in the abstract here, right? You know, I I think if, you know, a conditional use is is a narrowly can can prescribed thing, right? So like, like we said earlier, you could come in with this use, but it has conditions and sometimes prerequisites to establishing that use. Permitted use is, you don't even have to to come in front of us. So my view would be, if if you make it permitted, it it's sort of just goes away. I mean, it it's still recorded against the property, you know, it runs with the land, but I think that would be sort of a individual discussion with the landowner of how you wanna document that.
Yeah.
But ultimately, But ultimately, you're sort of removing those conditions by making it permitted use. You can't, you can't then require them to have the more narrow.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. So for example, what I would understand then is if we were to allow, for example, exterior storage, outdoor storage lots to be permitted, the existing conditional use permit would become void, however, they still would have to meet the conditions that are outside the permitted scope of it. So let's say that we limited the square footage of, nah, that's a bad example. We limited the height of the fence or put a fence height in their condition. They would still have to meet that fence, but the use would still, that use is permitted, but they would still have to meet specific parts of that conditional use permit.
Do you, on a yearly basis, every quarter or something, do you review for possible opportunities?
Yeah, so right now, actually, the city has been going through an update of the zoning code since, I believe, like 2019, that's from my math. So what we are doing now is moving forward with a proposed update. It's not an overhaul for say, it's an update, bringing it, reformatting, fixing some things that are errors like that. Since we're just gonna be starting the comprehensive plan process here, it's not really recommended to jump into a full-blown zoning code update as you're going to a comprehensive plan update. As per what Jared was kind of talking about, once you complete your comprehensive plan, you have nine months afterwards to bring your zoning code in compliance with their comprehensive plan. That's kind of that time you do that over, that up, big update, because at that time you understand what the met councils' requirements are. There is some things in there about land use generally and so you update at that time and do more of a lift. But historically, my other communities, and I think they did it here, they do an annual look at it. Once a year, we do a cleanup. Okay, state statute changed, we gotta change this, the law changed on this. This here has become an issue, so annually, I'd recommend going for, proposed, doing an annual cleanup or amendments to zoning code to make it sure that it's compliance with the current standards that we're seeing in the community.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to variances. So as I said before, you know, variances are alterations to performance standards that are in the code. And someone, so someone comes in and says, I wanna, I, I wanna build something within the, the setback for this reason. So it's, it's not generally permitted in the zoning ordinance, but there's a special case, maybe there's a special reason. Lot areas setbacks, lot width or depth. An application is referred to the planning commission for study, so this body comes to, the, the, by virtue of city code section 1054, comes to the planning commission for study, but it's ultimately ruled upon by the council, which is the Board of Adjustments of Appeals. The Board of Adjustments of Appeals, again, going back to Minnesota statute 462 is a specific statutory responsibility and in Burnsville, that's the city council. In order to get a variance, you have to satisfy what's called the practical difficulties test. It means the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, but the use is prohibited by the ordinance and the plight of the landlord, landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. And the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. There's a lot of play in, in those joints there in terms of some of the language. It is very clear, in the statute, economic considerations alone do not constitute an undue hardship or a practical difficulty. So variances are only permitted when they're in harmony with the general purposes and intended the zoning ordinances and when they're consistent with the comprehensive plan. So you still can't go against something that's in the comprehensive plan. So that is, you know, a state statutory framework that we have to apply when the variance application comes in front of us. It's also within our city code, so we have to consider both state law and our city code. There's really no variation within our city code that changes or alters anyway or adds an extra consideration from that practical difficulties test. It's funny, because courts have held that cities must make sure they analyze any criteria in their code, but I, I am not very familiar with any city that has something that's, that alters that practical difficulties test. I mean, it's the standard to apply and frankly, has enough going on. But if you make a decision to, to grant or deny a practical difficult, or a variance, you have to apply that test and you have to kind of show your work. So a- as you know, you know, the planning commission in Burnsville makes recommendations for certain findings of fact with respect to decisions that then go up to the city council. We prepare, when the city council makes a decision, findings of fact on that decision. In other cities, that's usually built into a resolution, but we do things a little bit uniquely, Burnsville here, where we have sort of a findings of fact document. But that is what a court is gonna look at, should that decision be challenged. And that includes a decision for a conditional use permit grant as well as a variance grant. So the, the court's gonna look at the, the findings supporting the decision and determine whether or not the application of that practical difficulties test was reasonable or otherwise not arbitrary and capricious. So if you had a variance application and you failed to apply the practical difficulties test or applied it, you know, the wrong way, you might find it overturned. But generally speaking, if you're applying the test, there's gonna be deference to the All right, let's see here. I would say that the biggest problem that arises in a variance scenario is when the, the planning commission and the city councils sort of have a different view of, of when a variance should be granted. That does come up. So that's where there can be tension and obviously, the planning commission as being the recommended body, you'll kind of quickly learn where, where those differences are. But that could be it. And also, I would say generally, when communities are granting a lot of variances, you might, you know, that's when you kind of start being introspective of why are we granting all of these variances? Do we need to make the, the, the changes to the code so that we don't have this problem? I mean, there are some communities that are just geographically set up in a way, like sort of some of the communities around Lake Minnetonka with weird lots and things where it just kind of engenders more, more likely variances due to odd shapes of lots where these very standard provisions just don't apply to very unique lot situations. But generally, generally speaking, in a, in a community like Burnsville, if you find yourself with a lot of variances, you might say, okay, maybe we need to make some changes here to our code so we don't have to deal with this so much. Okay. Okay, quick little primer on, on planned unit developments. So a planned unit development is a deviation from zoning standards. The point of, of a planned unit development is to provide flexible performance standards and really sort of a give and take, a, a give and take between the landowner and the city. So what, what we're looking at is, is really, again, back to that kind of performance standard issues with respect to lot sizes, building sizes, those kind of things, more, more than the use itself, right? So we, the use needs to be consistent with the underlying land use with, within the district. In our city code, I think it's 1027-1, we have kind of a, set out some of the things we look at or we think about when it comes to planned unit development. That's variety, the concept of mixed land uses, housing types and densities, sensitivity through the departure from the strict application of required setbacks, yard areas, lot sizes to maximize the development potential of the land while remaining sensitive, sensitive to the unique and natural characteristics. Efficiency, density transfer and, and district integration. So those are the, some of the, the reasons we have set out in our city code as to why we would make a, a planned unit development consideration. But, you know, when we think about modern shopping complexes where, you know, you have a road running through and, you know, two buildings on one side, that's a typical PUD, Burnsville Center, PUD. So that is adopted by an ordinance and fleshed out in a PUD agreement and that is, you know, overlay on top of that land. We have quite a bit of those in, in Burnsville. PUDs are a legislative decision, so we have significant discretion when we make that decision. But, you know, what I would caution is the idea that we, we wanna think about really what, what, what is the point of the PUD and the point of a PUD is really to, to relax some of the standards, the performance standards within that zoning district to make that use happen. So it, it's not to sort of spot zone or, or, or make changes with respect to, to, to land use itself. And in fact, that's in 1027-2 in our code, it says, uses within the PUD may include only those uses generally considered associated with the general land use category shown for the area on the official comprehensive plan. So that's, that's codified in our city code. Couple other things to think about when we're looking at applications, the 60-day rule. So everyone's probably familiar with this. I think staff is pretty good about keeping track and, and notifying the commission and council about the 60-day rule. But this is Minnesota statute 1599, within 60 days of a submit of an application, we're required to approve or deny the request or the request is deemed approved. So if we don't make a decision, it's deemed approved, which is a pretty big penalty and a pretty big decision-making, decision to give away, right? So we wanna be mindful of that at all times. This is, and, and the 60-day rule is, is separate from the subdivision rule, so you also see the subdivisions come in front of the planning commission and that's 120 days. A lot of times, it's not very, 60 days is tight, right? So it's not uncommon for us to do an automatic extension, which we're allowed to do, of no more than 60 days by providing the applicant notice in writing. After that point, and that, this has happened before with applicants in front of us, we have to agree to extend it beyond 120 days, which obviously, it happens and sometimes some applications and some decisions merit more scrutiny and, and, and more conversation. The 60-day rule does not begin to run until the application is complete, so it's something, this is really a staff level issue, but staff have to be mindful and are mindful of what the application looks like to make sure they deem it complete. And that decision must be made within 15 days of submission. So if it's incomplete, if there's something that they should have provided that they hadn't provided, we don't want to deem it complete, because there may be a vital piece of information that the planning commission needs that won't be in front of you.
If I can add to that, Jared, so within our packets or staff reports we provide you or backgrounds, there's always that inclusion on the very top there of the 60 days where we are in the process of the 60 days, because that is, to Jared's point, a very important thing where we are on that one, because we never ever wanna run into that 60-day that he said that automatically approval. So we gotta make sure we get those 1599 letters out and within 15 business days, we usually shoot for 10, that's, that's the rule I have, and make sure the applicant's aware of what information's missing, so we can keep the application moving forward in a very transparent way. So that's what we always have in all of our documents where we are in that process on the 120-day rules or pointing out if we did get an extension from the applicant. For example, the Hampton Inn project that we reviewed previously, they were up against the timeline at the city council meeting, they agreed to extend that application voluntarily to allow for additional time for us to work with them. They extended it 40 days, they have to provide that in writing to us, can't do it verbally, has to be in writing, and then that goes into the record as well. Just to put a little more clarity onto that and why we, you guys see that in your packets.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, it's a common question I ask when staff calls me about a land use problem, where are we at on the 60-day rule? And, you know, of course, because 60 days is not just for running it through planning commission, but it's all the way through city council. If the city denies a land use request, it must state in writing the reasons for the denial at the time of the denial or at the next meeting, provided it is in, within that 60-day period of time. Also must state reasons for denial on the record and provide the applicant a written statement of the reasons for the denial. As we talked about earlier, we do those things through a findings of fact. Some cities do it just through a resolution and that's the written denial that then gets sent to the applicant. But, you know, you've all probably seen something that goes in front of the council that is debated vigorously from the council and there's sort of a tentative decision being made, but they make a motion to bring back findings of fact for denial or even approval, depending on, uh, uh, the case may be if they're kind of flipping from the recommendation. And that allows staff to, to give a more robust reason based on the vigorous discussion that was had in front of the council that, that is then adopted at a later meeting. As we talked about earlier, public hearings are required by statute for various items that come before this body. The purpose of the hearing is to give public input. Sometimes, public hearings are not just a statutory requirement, they've been put in the ordinance as well, so we wanna make sure that we're following, again, both statute and ordinances. There are times, this doesn't really happen in the zoning context, but there are, and I'm not speaking specifically about Burnsville or anything, I've seen it just generally with cities where the drafting of an ordinance isn't particularly thoughtful and what is otherwise a hearing, say for example, in a licensing context, is listed as a public hearing. So there's a difference between a, a hearing where the council's gonna engage in a quasi judicial decision, but there's no public element required, right? But if you've put it in your code that it is a public hearing, then you have to have a public hearing, regardless of whether or not the, the resident input is really related to whatever issue it is. And that happens not infrequently, because, you know, I think people just get in the head, they hear hearing, they hear public hearing, because in, in the zoning context, that's, that's what we have. So amending a zoning ordinance, amending the comp plan, approving preliminary Platts, CUPs, IUPs, all of these require a public hearing. They require specific notice to the applicant and, and folks within a certain distance of the, the parcel in question. And so those are very important and the failure to have a public hearing can invalidate the decision. A recent case, Wilconia versus Dock, a case I litigated actually, was a, a zoning decision after a moratorium to adopt a prohibition against permanent docks. The city viewed that as a police power ordinance, because there was a specific statute on point under 412-221, subdivision 12, which says, hey, cities can regulate docks, sort of as an exercise of their police power, separate from 462 over here. They didn't have a public hearing, they just enacted it and it went all the way to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court says, well, we have this test that we're creating for what is or is not a zoning ordinance, we're gonna apply that test to this particular ordinance in question and found, found that it was a zoning ordinance. And because it was a zoning ordinance and they didn't have a public hearing, the ordinance failed. So it can, and that was after several years of litigation, so it's really important to make sure that when a public hearing is required, we're having the public hearing. And frankly, when it comes to things that are bordering on zoning and kind of in that gray territory, we're in doubt have the public hearing. I think this is my last slide here. I think this is my last slide here, just other considerations to think about in your role. So just wanting everyone to sort of understand their role. Couple things, you know, council is the ultimate policymaker, right? The planning commission is the recommending body, but the planning commission does recommend policy. Some of your decisions are going to be legislative in nature. Again, adopting a PUD, adopting a zoning ordinance, those are legislative in nature. You have a lot of discretion. This commission and ultimately the council has a lot of discretion in making those decisions. It's hard for those decisions to be overturned, in other words. When you're reviewing a conditional use permit or a variance, you're operating in a quasi judicial capacity. Again, you're kind of calling balls and strikes based on the language of the code and the application in front of you. So knowing which one of those roles you're wearing at any given time is important. It's important for for your discussion, you know, so that you can understand that what you put on record is is you're speaking the right language for for the decision that you have. Again, while ultimately the city council is going to make the decision, I can tell you as a as a litigator, when we litigate these land use decisions, the discussion, the transcript from both the planning commission and the city council ends up in the record before the court. So those discussions are something that that courts looked at, get argued. So understanding your role at any given time, I think, is really important in making sure that you're helping to build that that record. Another thing is that you're going to have stuff that comes in front of you that requires expertise that's sort of beyond us, right? So we're not experts in everything touching land use, we're not experts in sort of environmental review, for example, or various other things where you make conditions. So for example, going back to conditional use permits, you might have conditions that say, hey, this use is conditioned on getting all of the requisite state and federal approvals that may apply in this particular area, right? So we don't have to be experts in that, we just have to make sure that we're following our code and on the back end, making sure that they get all the requisite approvals from those experts. So again, knowing and kind of understanding where we apply, that is important. And finally, another thing about knowing your role is just that kind of advocate versus advocate versus decision maker, right? You are in a a decision-making body, a recommending body, you're not in the advocate role, right? So we want to make sure that when you have an application in front of you, you're you're not out in the community signing up to a list who's opposing the application in front of you because that's not your role, right? So decisions of this body, or decisions of the city council can get overturned if we have a record of of biased decision making. So it's important to make sure that, you know, we're not doing that. And one of the the pieces of that is, you know, letting staff do the bulk of the work for, letting staff do the legwork. Staff is going to, you know, work with applicants, make sure that you have all of the right information. And I'm sure this has happened before, but obviously sometimes things come back in front of the planning commission because, hey, this is sort of not fully baked. Staff works with the applicant, brings back something fully baked. We don't want you to sort of engage in those discussions by yourself, we want staff to be the conduit. We want everyone to receive all of the information together. You vote as a collective unit, it's a collective decision, so we want to make sure that everyone has the same access to information. Doesn't mean, you know, if there's a parcel land in question, you can't drive by it and say, oh, that's that's where that is. You know, that's totally fine, but having those meetings outside of of commission meetings with an applicant is is not recommended.
Jared, I have a quick question. Can you touch on conflict of interest? You kind of touched on a little bit there about, you know, the role of the commission on conflict of interest. You kind of touched on a little bit there about the, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, well, I would say, I mean, as a general matter, if you have some sort of interest, I would say, specific interest in something that comes in front of the council, you want to, or comes in front of the commission, you want to talk to staff and then potentially me about whether or not there is a real conflict. That could be a financial conflict. Sometimes it's just an appearance things, you know, and and that's important too, sometimes to to avoid the appearance of a conflict, even though it may actually be a two-two conflict that requires you not to to vote. But again, I think what happens most often is just the idea that the public gets the sense that someone has has a decision before they even get to the meeting. And I think that's really what you want to try to avoid as much as possible, to bring an open mind to the meeting, have staff develop, you know, the record in front of you. And 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 obviously, things don't happen in a vacuum. This is your community, it's very important to you. You're aware of what's going on in the community. I'm not naive, right? But we want to make sure that, you know, everyone is giving a fair shake and giving a fair shake. And and again, as a collective, you're getting all of the information together.
I'm just going to add on to Jared's point there, sorry, Commissioner. So I've had a couple of times in my career where there has been a conflict of interest on a planning commissioner. One of them worked for, one of the applicants on this asked, you know, they called me and I brought in the attorney and said, hey, this is the situation, and the attorney advised on that. So what I ask is just call me if you ever have a chance, like, ooh, I might be in, you know, I know so-and-so because of something. Just let me know, we can bring Jared in, just to make sure, better safe than sorry. I've had one case in my career where someone should have stepped down and not voted on the case. And luckily, nothing was brought up from that, nothing occurred. But if if there was litigation, they would have lost. There was a definite conflict of interest. So just just let me know, if there's ever a time where you're thinking, well, this, better safe than sorry, to Jared's point, so.
Commissioner.
It sounds like if something is within, falls within the plan, falls within zoning, that we really can't vote no on something? Is that a fairly accurate assessment?
Well, I I we've got to be careful.
And if staff says they support blank.
Well, what I would say is, you know, for example, if you have a conditional use permit and you have various requirements in your code for meeting that particular use within that district in your code, and they meet that, I say the the answer is is yes. You don't really have much discretion there. Again, there's there's certain conditional uses where you can put conditions on it. But there's not a lot of discretion if you've already made the legislative decision as to what is required. And you you can't change that on a dime at the time of the application. So if it's something, you get an application and you're like, yeah, I wish, I wish that wasn't the the deck of cards we're playing with, that's unfortunate, but for the particular application in question, your hands are kind of tied.
Yeah. Now, to add, a good example would be if we're looking at a landscaping plan that meets ordinance, but you believe they need more trees for screening, that would be a conflict right there. Because they meet ordinance with the amount of trees they have planted, but you want them to go above and beyond. And there's not a request for flexibility via PUD or anything like that, so that'd be like a step too far. Is that a pretty good summary?
Good example.
Yep.
Instead of my vague analogies. But but to Mike's point, I mean, if you you were in a PUD situation, you might have the flexibility. Again, there's that give and take, right? So you might get above what the ordinance might otherwise require, but they're going to get some flexibility in return.
Yes, so follow up on that. So on a conditional use permit, however, the planning commission could make another recommendation.
Okay. Yep, as long as it's like Jared said about the conditional use permits, like the last meeting, we did a great job. It's not my favorite to do math at the dais, but the applicant did ask at the meeting to increase the height of a fence. And so that's where you guys would step in and say, yes, we support that, you know, we did it perfectly. You asked our input, we provided here our stance on what we think, and then you guys add the condition to address their need. So that's a perfect example. Now, if you were to say something outside the lines on that one, saying you should, you know, I don't know. There's, add more lighting or something like that, that's outside the ordinance, that's starting to get pushed in outside the fringe of a conditional use permit because that's not the topic at hand, or it's outside the preview of the application.
That's it. We've come to the end of my slides. Any other questions? Commissioner.
I apologize for the questions.
No, it's fine.
On the PUDs, I I take Burnsville Center, for example, because you brought that up. Traditionally, it had been primarily food and retail, and it's now become a zoo. Or how is that generically just fit into that PUD? Or did that, would that be something that would be outside the PUD that they would have to?
That was an amendment to the PUD to allow that use within the PUD.
Okay.
Yep.
So you can add amendments later on.
Yeah, I would say, and Mike can chime in here, typically, you know, from a PUD standpoint, we want to move into the the more kind of dimensional flexibility types of things than the use flexibility. That's sort of the ideal place to be for for PUDs, but yes.
Correct. So usually, like to Jared's point, if you're going to do a PUD, in my experience, it's the flexibility. So it's usually, we need flexibility due to the, we can't meet lot size requirements, so we can't plant the number of trees. All right, can, is there something that, a lot of times they'll say, we'll add some additional plantings on site somewhere else or try to work some kind of a deal. It's when you get to that use realm, it gets it's kind of interesting. Usually, you got to talk to Jared.
I have a question, and it's about the stuff that was put in our packet, kind of the guidelines.
Oh, yes, I'll get to that, yep.
We're going to get to that next?
Yep.
Okay. No more questions for me, thank you.
Right.
Is that it? That's a wrap for questions? Awesome. Thanks, Jared.
All right. Thank you all.
That's an excellent segue. So within your packets, there is planning commissioner onboarding documents that we provided, their draft. Apologize if there's any typos or spelling errors, their drafts. The intent of it is to provide commissioners with more background on what we look at when we see site plans and what we kind of, you know, do that deeper dive. So when you're looking at a site plan, what kind of information, you know, to ask questions about, like, you know, do they meet the philometric plan? Do they meet the landscaping plan? Connor did a good job taking a look at those and kind of updating them. But we're just kind of looking for feedback as we, in my experience, we onboarded two new planning commissioners this past year. It's always nice to have these documents available for everyone, too. It's just good to have follow-through, follow-up documents to show, to guide you as you review these applications. Kind of like Jared did today, same thing, what the conditional use permit is, what a planning development is. So one document kind of walks through those, another one is the organizational one, the community development. And then the other one is site plan review, you know, what kind of look at. And that's one thing we're kind of looking at as we're updating the code, is kind of looking more towards like a site plan review on some applications. We get a lot of requests in the community for additions to buildings that are so close to being, this should be at a planning commission, this should be at a zone, at a city council. So we're trying to put, figure out a way of doing that so we can have these site plan reviews more often. Because some of these items are so on the line of, should it be administrative? Should I go to planning commission? So what we're working on as a staff level is creating, within the zoning code, a trigger for them to go to planning commission. They, you're over this, it's very clear, you got to go to planning commission for a review. And that's where that site plan comes in. We don't do a whole lot of site plan review here. A lot of times, it's a conditional use permits, like we've seen. We do have a couple of cases here. I should say we should do a handful a year where we do the site plan review, five, five projects. But we have a couple coming up here will be more the site plan review, looking at landscaping plans and all that kind of fun stuff.
You mentioned you're seeing applications that are, that that you're not sure if they should be administrative or or come to the commission. I mean, and you say they're right on the line, there's a line there, right? And so they must be not coming to us because they're on this side of that. They're on kind of that that side of the line and not on our side of the line.
Correct. There is a part of code that allows for administrative review.
Yeah, which is great.
So which is, we like that. It streamlines the process, it goes, makes the process faster for the applicants, everything like that. Instead of a typical, typical planning case takes about 45 to 60 days to turn around, on average, sometimes 120, sometimes longer than that. But some of these cases that come in for building permit, they are, there's not clear wording in the code on when it should go to planning commission, when it's not. And my, I think it works better in a, in a planning, in our perspective, is if it's identified in code. This is what the requirements are, you hit these, you can go right to building permit. If not, you got to go through the planning process. It's just not clearly written into code. So that's one thing we're working on as part of the zoning code update, is to really articulate that mechanism.
I was going to say, as an architect and a frequent applicant, you know, oftentimes, we go right up to that line because there's the line we can, you know, whether it's a setback or whatever, that's the line.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
You bet you kind of made me nervous when you.
No. There's, there's, there's two, there's the code that kind of contradict themselves as we're looking at, they 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 say different things.
Yeah.
So one says you can do 10%, one says 30%, and so it's more clean up those things.
Okay.
Where, and then there's some use questions that it's very gray. So I just think it's a cleaner process for the city and, you know, talking, obviously, we talk to Jared here to outline that process within code. So any comments on those documents, any thoughts? If not, you can feel free to email me if you have concerns, not as a group, individually, if you have any questions on them. But overall, the goal is to provide documentation to help you kind of review these cases and stuff like that, especially in the onboarding. These are documents that are created for another municipality, which I thought would be very helpful in this kind of situation here. As we move forward onboarding commissioners, we're also providing to other staff as they're looking to kind of use something similar for their commissions as well. Jared looked at them too, since he's here.
I got a question. So I wrote down some of the like resources that's important for us to be able to kind of understand. So the the comp plan saw that in there, several zoning ordinances, the code to be able to go into. The district's zoning maps, is that of importance to maybe be more familiar with? Because I don't, I didn't think I saw that. Maybe it's not important, but.
It is important. That's something we can add to it. I think that'd be important to understand with the districts and the zoning, like the land use and the zoning and how they interact together. That'd be something we can add to that.
Okay.
Because it's very important, because if it's not in accordance with the comprehensive plan, if the zoning code's not in accordance with the comprehensive plan, then you're violating state law. So we got to make sure that they talk.
Okay.
And that's something, we actually, a couple of weeks ago, got our system statements, which is the kickoff of the comprehensive plan process. So we'll be jumping into that here. We have three years now to update our comprehensive plan. And the system statements state what we need to do to meet the regional goals of the metropolitan council. And so we kind of start that process here. We'll be bringing that forward, probably going off for RFP for a consultant in early '26. And start that process. Got a lot of legwork ahead of us here to figure out how we're going to do it, but we just, it started.
Jared mentioned there, Burnsville has some different policies than other cities. When you guys came on board from other cities, what did you feel like? Did you have to learn a lot?
There is a learning curve, Commissioner. There's a lot of PUDs. And it's very common, I think, for built communities to have these PUDs, use PUDs, as I like to call them. They're specifically state what uses are permitted on the site. For example, the Hampton Inn project, that was a learning curve for me. I was used to working in developed communities or developing communities. So a lot of times, those PUDs are for more like setback flexibilities for a house. You got a new subdivision coming in, and they want flexibility from the 80-foot lots, they want to build them at 55, very common. The one thing that I found very interesting about Burnsville, and I appreciate, is the unanimous approval. The planning commission unanimously approves, goes right to the council. unanimous approval, the planning commission unanimously approves, goes right to the council, goes on the consent agenda, which puts a lot of onus on this group here, a lot of authority and a lot of respect that they have for you guys that make those determinations that they don't have to hear it, have a presentation to them. That's one thing I think is very unique to Burnsville, and I, you know, makes, you know, my past municipalities, I would have to present once at planning commission and then present it again at city council. But here, they give you guys the authority and they trust your judgment to put it right on the consent agenda if it's unanimous of vote. I don't know if Jared or Connor want to add to that or anything.
Commissioner, I would echo what Mike was saying, I think the consent agenda guidelines is one of the big differences, and I think it works really well, and he's correct, I mean, it's the council putting a lot of responsibility and faith in this body, and it really streamlines things, I think. So I like it, but it is different. I'd also say, going back to what I was mentioning during my presentation, the findings of fact kind of document that we adopt at the council level, that is different than kind of a typical resolution. Usually you have sort of that city council resolution, findings of fact are kind of built into it, but it is a little bit of a different way of doing it. Neither good nor bad, it's just different.
All right, we ready to move on to updates? Any updates, commissioners?
All right, I do have one update, not really an update. All the items from the last planning commission, we had the conditional use permit for Chimney Doctor for the open storage lot, we had the DRF concrete construction conditional use permit for open storage, and then we had the Good Shepherd conditional use permit amendment. All those are on track to be on the city council meeting on the twenty-first, I believe, is that the date?
Yep.
Yep, they're all on track to be on that agenda, on the consent agenda, since they're all unanimously approved. And at the same time, we will be, the city council will be continuing the MSP Burnsville, the Hinton Inn conversion application at that time, that'll be on the regular agenda. Other than that, we'll be having a meeting on the twenty-seventh, so we'll be working on that next couple of weeks, and we'll be, twenty-seventh, right? Yep, we'll be getting a packet out here in the next couple, yeah, couple of weeks, we'll get a packet out to you guys. Thank you.
All right.
Good meeting.
Yeah, next topic is adjournment.
Good job.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, good work, everybody.